We can go on the record. Are we on the record, Mr. Court Recorder? Yes, barely. All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, November the 13th, 2024. It's seven o'clock PM. My name is Jennifer Grace. I'm a public utility law judge with the Maryland Public Service Commission. Sitting with me at this virtual hearing today, I'm told, although I can't really tell by some of the the participant names, there are nineteen participants on this call at this point. Sitting me with me at this virtual hearing today include members of the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, including, I think, the Honorable Kenneth Kyler, Michael Guerin, Tom Gordon III, and Ed Rothstein. I wanted to take this opportunity to give the floor to the Commissioners for any opening remarks. Mr. Kyler, you want to go first?
Yes, thank you. And I don't think Commissioner Rothstein's on. We also have a hearing tonight for PSEG, and I'm in that building with a thousand people, but in a conference room. So, thank you. Good evening. I'm Kenny Kyler, Carroll County Commissioner. Good evening, Judge Gray, staff, and the applicant. Thank you, members of the public, for taking the time to attend this important hearing. Carroll County has a rich agricultural heritage, and our agriculture is our number-one industry. In addition, Carroll County's government Ag Pres program is one of the most successful in the nation, preserving more farms through the purchase of easements than any other county in the state of Maryland. Agricultural land and ag remainder should be used for agriculture. Given that, it is very important to hear from you, our citizens, in this very important issue, and I encourage you to speak your minds on the proposed project to let us know where you stand tonight. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing from you, and thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner Kyler. Commissioner Garen?
Thank you, Judge. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And again, before I start speaking, I guess I wanted to clarify one thing. We don't actually have members of the Public Service Commission on this call, but they watch it and listen to it at a later date as it's recorded. Could you? I was never really certain about that from our last virtual.
So, the Commission has delegated this matter to the Public Utility Law Judge Division. I will hear all matters and write a proposed order that will go to the Commission, and they will decide the fate of the application at that point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Judge, for clarifying that. Again, thank you, Commissioner Kyler. My name is Mike Garen. I'm a Carroll County Commissioner, District Four. I actually represent these fine people down here on Fannie Dorsey Road who are now finding themselves dealing with a second, a second solar project on the same stretch of road. This particular case that we're talking about this evening really was the impetus that spurred the County Commissioners to vote unanimously five-nothing to prohibit the construction of solar projects on agricultural land. This particular project is quite literally, and I'm sure you've seen from the maps that you've been provided, quite literally out the front doorsteps of a number of citizens in our county. This is literally right across the street. This is the reason why the County Commissioners decided, wait a second, let's put the brakes on this and figure out what the best thing to do and the right thing to do for our citizens are. The Carroll County Commissioners are not opposed to solar. We prohibit, we allow it on industrial. People have it on their roofs. A lot of farmers use it. But this particular project that we're discussing tonight is really without without sounding, you know, without sounding kind of silly, literally in the face of a number of residents there. In terms of solar energy, it just also happens to be the least generation, the least electricity generated per acre. I'm looking at a list of energy sources that was published in the Wall Street Journal just a few weeks ago. Everything from nuclear to geothermal, wind, biomass, natural gas, hydroelectric, coal, and solar. Solar is quite literally almost zero on the scale of energy produced per acre. And now, unfortunately, some of our citizens are going to be having to deal with the fact that it's right outside their doorsteps. If solar is going, projects are going to go move forward in Carroll County, of course, the elected officials are opposed to it. But if it is going to move forward, this is the one case that I would beg you to look the closest at as we move forward with several other projects. The agricultural usage of this particular land, there's been a lot of misconceptions about what you can do in agriculture. There are over sixty different uses of agricultural land in Carroll County, sixty. Some of them are approved, some of them are conditional. You can use agricultural land for a lot of things in Carroll County. All the Carroll County Commissioners did was simply say agriculture, as Commissioner Kyler said, is the bedrock of our county. We made a decision that you could not put solar projects on agricultural land. It was as simple as that. And this particular case really exemplifies what we were trying to accomplish for our citizens. I implore that you please take a look at those particular issues as you move forward, as you advise the PSC on ways to go forward. But as a Carroll County Commissioner, I represent these folks, and this is not the way to go. It's just simply not the way to go, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Garen. Commissioners Gordon or Rothstein on the call? Okay. We're meeting virtually this evening to conduct the first of two public hearings currently scheduled in case number nine-seven-three-five, which is captioned in the matter of the application of Chaverton Solar Sunshine LLC for a CPCN, which is a certificate of public convenience and necessity, to construct a 3.0 megawatt solar photovoltaic generating facility in Carroll County, Maryland. The location of the proposed construction is 940 Fannie Dorsey Road. It's near the intersection, near Fannie Dorsey Road's intersection to Sacramento Drive in Sykesville. So, the purposes of this hearing are twofold. One, we're live on YouTube, so we're providing information to the public. I'm going to ask the parties to the matter to introduce themselves and to say who they represent. I'm then going to turn to the applicant. I'm going to ask the applicant to give a brief overview of the project as proposed. And that's the first part of this hearing, is to give information to the public. The second part of this hearing is to get information from the public. It's very important that we hear from people who are in and around the proposed project. So, for that reason, we have this first virtual public hearing. We'll have another public hearing at a location near the site, hopefully near the site, if we can find one that'll work, and that will be the week of January 8th, 2025. And I know the parties are already working on getting a date, time, and location, which we will announce at a later date for that hearing. The third way that we can hear from the public is by written comment. Written comment has to be provided by Monday, January 13th, 2025. You can provide written comment on the Commission website, which is You can also provide written comment by US Mail to the Maryland Public Service Commission. Attention Jamie Bergen, B-E-R-G-A-N, Chief Clerk, Six St. Paul Street, 16th Floor, Baltimore, Maryland 21202. And as long as those, any written comments are received by the Commission by Monday, January 13th, they will be considered as a part of this matter. All of the information in the application is available. It can be inspected in Carroll County. It's on file at the, let's see, this one's on file at let me just a second. The Sykesville Town Hall, 7547 Main Street in Sykesville. Again, you can go on the Commission website, psc.state.md.us, and there's a little greenish rectangle on the left side of the main page, and you put in this case number, which is nine-seven-three-five. And you can not only see the application, but everything that the parties will have filed in this case, including the next round of testimony to be filed by all parties, which is scheduled on December 18th, 2024. So, if the information wants more, if the public wants more information about this case, that's a great place to find it. All right, I'm going to start by having the parties introduce themselves, and we'll start with the applicant.
Good evening, Your Honor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Andy Flavin. I'm with a law firm, Travel and Pepper Hamilton Sanders LLP. And I represent the applicant, Chaverton Solar Sunshine LLC.
Thank you. PPRP?
Good evening, Your Honor. Steve Tolson, Assistant Attorney General. I am counsel to the Power Plant Research Program in the Department of Natural Resources. And tonight, Chris Adland, who is the project manager for this particular CPCN, is online with us and will be able to address any comments that you require from him. Thank you.
Mr. Tolson, can you talk about what PPRP is, please?
I would be delighted to, Your Honor. Commissioners Kyler and Garen, PPRP is a part of the Department of Natural Resources. They're called the Power Plant Research Program, but what they do is they conduct a coordinated review among seven state agencies of these applications for a CPCN that are filed. And they, they send out the information to all the agencies, get their input. They consider a number of things such as socioeconomic factors, environmental issues, health and safety, transportation, agriculture, a variety of things. And what they do at the end of this is they put their recommendations together in a letter that's signed by the Secretaries of the Department of Natural Resources and the Maryland Department of the Environment. That recommendation is filed with the Public Service Commission and is then taken under advisement by the Public Utility Law Judge, who issues a proposed order, which the Public Service Commission can then either endorse or reject. The recommendation is normally either to deny the project or to approve it. If PPRP recommends, or if the state recommends that the project be approved, they submit recommended licensing conditions to the Public Service Commission. And these conditions, which can be fairly extensive, are meant to protect the issues that I just discussed, that health, safety, welfare, environment, socioeconomic matters, climate change, everything. So, it's all within the statute in the Public Utilities Article at seven-two-oh-seven. And that's, that's what PPRP does. The PSC retains the final discretion as to whether to grant or deny the CPCN, and they can accept or modify the conditions the PPRP submits. Is that good, Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Office of Peoples Council?
Good evening, Your Honor. I'm County Commissioners. I'm Brock Miller, appearing on behalf of the Office of Peoples Council. The Office of Peoples Council is an independent state agency that represents the interests of Maryland's non-commercial ratepayers in proceedings before the Public Service Commission. With those interests in mind, we will review their filings and the testimony in this case to develop our position on Chaverton's CPCN application. I'm here tonight to hear any comments that the local residents might have so that my office can take those comments into consideration as we develop our position in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Carroll County is also a party to this matter?
Yes. Good evening, Your Honor. Andrew Meehan. I'm one of the attorneys representing the county. Also on the call is County Attorney Timothy Burke and the county's planning director, Chris Heine, who will be making some comments. I also want to thank the Commissioners who spoke previously for their comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And the staff of, the technical staff of the Public Service Commission. Mr. Wilson, there you go.
Yeah. Sorry, Your Honor. Yes, this is Peter Wilson. I'm an attorney with the Public Service Commission and represent technical staff. Staff is a party and participant in all Commission proceedings by statute. Technical staff's primary task in this proceeding and CPCNs of this sort is to give engineering testimony and to determine whether what, what effect, if any, the project will have on the stability and reliability of the electric grid. And oftentimes, well, not oftentimes, not, not very often, we have to complete the record, which is also a statutory duty of the, of the Commission. And with PPRP and the other parties providing much of the testimony, that is, that's rarely needed.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'm going to turn to the applicant to give a brief overview of the project right now. The reason why I'm not returning to the other parties is because they're still conducting their review. Again, their testimony is not due until December. Their first round of testimony is not due until December. So, Mr. Flavin, who, from, who's going to be giving a overview of the project?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, we have with, with the applicant Lauren Barchie and Tyler Richards. And I believe they're going to be working together to go through some slides and provide a brief overview of the project.
All right. Who would like access to share screen?
Tyler needs that, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, I just sent a request.
You should have access now.
Okay. Is that you?
Looks good.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, Your Honor, and thank you, Commissioners, for being here tonight. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Flavin said, my name is Lauren Barchie. I am a Community Impact Manager with Chaverton Energy. I'm joined tonight by the Development Manager for this project, Tyler Richards. Chaverton is a Maryland-based solar developer. We are dedicated to caring for and benefiting local communities. We are here tonight to discuss Project Sunshine, a community solar project being planned in Carroll County off of Fannie Dorsey Road. We started our outreach for this project, as one of the Commissioners alluded to, back in the fall of 2022, including sending letters to the neighbors of the project, conducting neighbor visits. We hosted a weekend site visit and a community meeting held in January of 2023, which was pretty well attended by the community. We are also planning to have another community meeting at the Sykesville Legacy Hall at the Freedom District Fire Department on December 9th, 6:00 PM. Letters for, to, you know, announce and invite neighbors to this community meeting will be going out this week. I just got confirmation for the location this evening. This community solar project will benefit the local community in many ways, including tax revenue to the state and county and an average of $375 annual savings to subscribers to the project. There will also be immediate environmental benefits consistent with Maryland's renewable energy and sustainability goals, including replacing non-renewable sources of energy and planting pollinator habitat that can increase farming production in the local area and support the local bee and insect population. Community solar is a program created and regulated by the state of Maryland, which allows Marylanders to be sure of the savings and benefits they will receive from the project. Community solar projects are different from utility-scale projects in that they are much smaller in size, usually less than fifty acres, as well as can benefit the local grid by making it more resilient by investing in new infrastructure. Project Sunshine is a three-megawatt solar project located in the Baltimore Gas and Electric Service Territory on a 125-acre parcel on Fannie Dorsey Road in Sykesville. Our proposed project will utilize approximately sixteen and a half of the total 125 acres, so about thirteen percent of the parcel, and is located on the west side of the parcel across from the intersection of Shenandoah Drive and Fannie Dorsey Road. It is partially surrounded by existing vegetation and screening on the northeastern side of the proposed project location. This project area of sixteen and a half acres is less than 0.01% of all agricultural zone land in the county. To gain access to the site, we will be constructing an access entrance located southwest of the project area. Access to the site will be controlled via a locked gate with a seven-foot-high agricultural-style fencing around the perimeter of the project. The solar panels will be mounted on a fixed-tilt racking system. And there will be two locations within the project area that will house our inverters and transformers. The equipment banks are currently proposed to be on the eastern and western portions of the project. The project site is located near wetlands on the northeast corner. However, the development area was carefully selected to avoid negative impacts to those environmental features, and the project has passed the reviews conducted by several state agencies responsible for environmental protections. Additionally, we will be adhering to Carroll County's established best practices for stormwater management and erosion and sediment control to ensure there is no impact on the surrounding streams. This project will meet and exceed the original zoning regulation that was set forth by Carroll County previously in zoning section 158.153E. While that zoning amendment was repealed, we have remained compliant to that amendment, or to that zoning. Regarding View Shed, the project is positioned north of Fannie Dorsey Road with a proposed eighty-foot front setback and a proposed twenty-five-foot wide landscaping buffer along the western, southern, and eastern sides of the project that will provide a visual shield from the neighbors to the solar system. This positioning within the parcel, coupled with over a thousand feet, a thousand linear feet of existing trees on the northeastern side, naturally shields the proposed project from that direction. The project will be over six hundred feet from the neighboring parcels to the east along Jasana Court and over a hundred feet from the residential parcels on the other side of Fannie Dorsey Road. As for interconnection, the project is situated within BG&E, close to an existing three-phase circuit that has sufficient capacity for the project's interconnection without the requirement of material upgrades. Our plan is to connect to BG&E's existing 13.2 KV circuit. We will be extending the underground circuit into the project site from Fannie Dorsey Road. The route will then continue underground, ultimately reaching each of the project's equipment pads located, again, on the western and eastern corners of the project. This concludes our project overview for this evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to share the details of Project Sunshine. While this presentation was brief, we are available on an ongoing basis to answer questions about the project going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just give me a moment. I'm going to make myself a host again. All right. So, now we're moving on to the portion of this evening's hearing where we get information from the public. Several folks have signed up to speak tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and call those names. And then if there's anyone on the line who hasn't signed up, well, that person will have an opportunity to speak. And then I'll turn to the Carroll County Commissioners to see if they have anything else that they want to say. So, first, I'd like to call on Annette Fleischel. I understand, Ms. Fleischel, that you may be speaking on your own behalf and also that you are prepared to read a statement for Mark Hamilton.
That's correct, Judge Gray.
Whichever order you'd like to go, and just let me know who you're speaking for at which time so that I can make sure that it's correct in the transcript, please.
Okay, we'll start. I'll speak for myself. Good evening to everyone online. Let me get right to the point. I am adamantly opposed to the placement of solar energy facilities on our treasured agricultural land in Carroll County. It rightly belongs in industrial or commercial zones, not anywhere near residential homes, and not on ag land. The Fannie Dorsey Road community is a two-mile stretch of road with about a dozen small side roads, circles, and dead ends. It is truly a wonderful mix of farmland and residential housing. Some homes are new, but most are not. Some residents were born here and never left. Residents are friendly and feel safe. Residents walk along the roadside and walk their dogs. There are no sidewalks. They wave as they pass you, even if they do not know you. I have lived on this road for 24 years in a pre-Civil War farmhouse on 50 acres. I love this neighborhood. But everything has changed. Two solar energy generating projects want to invade our quiet, harmonious living by upsetting all the residents, instilling a sense of fear for the future, and a foreboding sense of doom and gloom. This solar invasion will ruin the rural atmosphere of our community. Not one, but two wonderland of solar panels only 0.6 miles apart. Why do this? Because they can. Chaverton Solar Sunshine is one of these facilities. Eight thousand two hundred solar panels, creating a 3.0 megawatts of power sited on 16.5 acres of approximately 125 acres of prime farmland. The site plan indicates it will be sited at the westernmost corner of the property. This is the very farthest corner from the landowner's residence and is adjacent to the easement for the BGE Electric Towers. Why do this? Because they can. One side is closest to Fannie Dorsey Road. It can be seen by anyone who travels Fannie Dorsey Road and is directly opposite from seven homes because they have a constant view of the solar site. Why do this? Because they can. This placement is unbelievable and obscene. The entire community is upset and angry. We are horrified that the state of Maryland is using the PSC to overthrow our local laws. We know why Chaverton Solar and the landowners are doing it. For the inordinate amount of money it brings them both. These landowners and energy companies do not care about the need for clean energy or saving the planet. They only care about the billions of government dollars that are available to subsidize and fund these green energy projects and how quickly they spend this money before it runs out. Well, they are in trouble now. You just watched. January 21st, 2025 will be here quicker than a flash of solar energy. Do you have any idea of the dollars we are talking about? I can tell you. I own 50 acres of prime farmland. Twenty-five acres are currently farmed by a local farmer. Last week, I received another mailer from a solar energy company, which said, and I quote, "We would like to offer the following for your property, roughly for a 10- to 25-acre project. $175,000 per year to lease with a 2% escalator, $5,000. We pay the property taxes, you pay nothing." A lot of people cannot resist. I will always resist. Neither of these two proposed solar properties are being farmed by the owners. They're being cared for by the local farmers, who will now lose the lease of the acres involved. The result? Loss of money for our local farmers, their families, and their livelihood. But the landowners do not care. Carroll County has a proud heritage and tradition in agriculture. We will not allow community solar to destroy this heritage and our neighborhoods. Do not underestimate Carroll County's farming communities. We will not exchange our beautiful farmland for solar energy. If allowed on one project, it will effectively chip away our ag land 20 acres at a time. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. And then do you have comments to read for Mr. Hamilton?
Could I take a break and let somebody else go?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. That's
Okay.
I wish I'd thought of it myself. Dennis Minor? I see Dennis's iPhone on here. I just sent a message to ask to unmute.
Okay, it just came across. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I am Mark Hamilton's next-door neighbor. So, if you look at that drawing that Dave So if you look at that drawing that they've submitted to you of what the placement of panels, my house is right on the corner of Fannie Dorsey and Shenandoah Drive. So my house is right smack in the middle of this thing. The elevation of my house is seventeen feet higher than the elevation of that farmland. Again, my second floor, which is my living room, would make it twenty-seven feet higher. So no amount of trees or anything they're going to plant there is going to hide this atrocity from our houses. There is no reason for this to be done. We have gone through this with the landowner. We've gone through it with the commissioners. And it just shame on Taberton and shame on the landowner that wants to do this to our neighborhood because it doesn't need to be done. So I think, I think, Your Honor, you were the one on the last meeting where we were at the the library in Westminster. I think it was you.
No, sir, it was not. It was there are, it was another public utility logic.
Okay, so I brought up one of the things that there's a, there's a solar farm in Pennsylvania that they decommissioned because it's no longer prosperous. But anyway, so the company that installed it's out of business. The landowner cannot get rid of the panels. And so again, it's just, it's just dormant. But the point of that was when the judge listened to us last time, I brought this up. So she took it back. I watched the hearing that she had with Taberton. And they, she brought that up, which was great. I'm glad she did of what I said. And she asked them, what would you do to decommission panels? And they said they called the local landfill and they said that they would take them. Well, that's part of the answer. So I called Westminster Landfill. And the lady I spoke to, her name's Mary, said, absolutely not. We will not accept panels in their current condition because they're full of chemicals. Chemicals would have to be removed. And then they would take them once they're neutralized and they would recycle the glass and the metal. But they said it can never go into a landfill because of chemicals that's sad. So you're talking about eight thousand panels across from my house, a hundred and two feet. I don't get it. I don't get any of this and why we have to sit here and fight for this because no one on this call, no one anywhere would want this in front of their house. And I'm looking to you, Your Honor, to help us because this is just to the point now of getting really ridiculous because we're not going to let this happen. This is, this can't happen. And I've lived here twenty-six years. And you know, they farmed this land all year long, every year that I've been here. And to take income away from these farmers that leased this is just ridiculous. You know, only forty percent of Maryland's energy comes from fossil fuel, and that's in the Baltimore Sun. And the Baltimore Sun on August eleventh of twenty-twenty-four, and this is quote, "The state of Maryland must be cautious with its dwindling farm acreage due to solar development, due to solar farms and development," unquote. And that's what they the new governor even committed to preserving. So I don't get why we're doing all this, but I get it. And you know, the lady that did her proposal for this thing, she should be a used car salesman, but you know, it's just a bunch of baloney. But that's my, that's my take on it. And I also did another research. I Googled, how far away should you live from a three-megawatt solar farm? And it says one-point-two miles, safe distance to live near any solar farms, one-point-two miles due to the EMS, which is electric magnetic fields. Plus, we also have the power lines here. So, and if these things leak, it's got cadmium and lead in them. And this is our groundwater. We drink this water. This is what we live off of. So there should be no, I see no reason why this, there's other land that, has anybody even asked the commissioners? What else can we do and where else can this go? So I am totally against this. We're going to see our home values decrease. Who wants to look out their windows and then their yards and see us eight thousand panels? It's just, it's actually ludicrous. I just can't believe we're having to go through this, but you know, I thank you for your time, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Minor, and thank you for your participation in the other matter. If there is an update to your public comment in the other matter, I would strongly encourage you to submit a written public comment if it's still available in that case.
Sure.
Oh, if you didn't get the instructions, I'll read them again before the end of this hearing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sandra Roberts? So
Hi.
Oh, you're, I hear you now. Thank you.
Sorry, Judge Grace, we are trying to get unmuted. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sandy Roberts and I live at six-five-seven-one Justana Court in Sykesville. I, I, along with the other speakers, are extremely opposed to the project. Two years ago, we learned of the two industrial solar farms that were proposed for our rural neighborhood. And more specifically, these solar farms were proposed to be placed on fields just located hundreds of feet beyond many of our front and backyards in the rural neighborhood that we have already described. Many of us have lived in our homes for forty-plus years and we have been outraged and extremely upset. A large group of us came together and began to speak out against these proposed solar farms. Opposition has been very loud, very strong, and very clear. We have packed multiple public hearings over the past few years to speak out against the industrial solar on ag land anywhere in Carroll County. Our speeches went on late into the night and there was standing room only at these hearings. The news followed it and published it. We erected no solar on ag land signs on our properties until our whole community and its adjoining communities were dotted with the signs. It was pretty incredible. Our dedicated Carroll County Commissioners listened intently to our concerns on many occasions. They visited the proposed sites, walked the farm with us, did their research, held public hearings, and then made an informed decision and voted unanimously to enact a law banning solar farms on ag land in Carroll County. We were relieved and grateful to our commissioners for acting upon our concerns and for protecting the farmland that we so value in our county. Thank you so much, commissioners, for doing the right thing for us and for our farmers. But now here we stand, one year later, being told that the state may choose to disregard our county commissioner's decision to prohibit solar on ag land in our county. The threat of these industrial solar farms popping up in every in, sorry, in very close proximity of our homes is back again after our long, hard, hard battle. Why do we even have a local governing body in place if the state can just overrule the decisions that are made by them? It does not make any sense. Our county commissioners have impressive knowledge of all aspects of the county and its citizens. So they are the officials who should have the final say on the use of its county land, not the state of Maryland. Carroll County is already doing its part to meet and help meet Maryland energy needs. Near Hampstead in Carroll County sits a warehouse owned by Stag Industrial with a rooftop community solar array of nine-point-two megawatts covering twenty-three acres of solar panels. It is the largest rooftop community solar project in the U.S. At least it was at the time of the printing of the article that I read in Renew Energy World. This is the direction that Maryland needs to go. There are plenty of rooftops, airport parking lots, highway medians, parking garages, where solar panels can be placed so that it does not destroy land that is actively farmed by our farmers, producing food for either farm animals or humans. And furthermore, the local farmers, as has already been mentioned, will be out of the, they won't have the ability to farm these fields anymore. Some of them are already struggling as it is. And I believe if these projects are allowed to pass through, it's just going to be the beginning of a long list of acreage of fertile farmland that will be lost to industrial solar in our county, thus stealing all or more farm acreage away from the local farmers. Many of the landowners of the proposed solar farms are not farmers. They did not purchase this farmland with the intent to build a solar farm or with the intent to help the state meet their green energy goals. The greedy solar companies dangle dollar signs in front of them, as Annette has just discussed with us from her letter, offer letter, enticing them to move forward with these plans against the wishes of the community members. It's a very easy way for them to make a dollar and they don't have much to do but go collect their checks from the solar companies at the expense of all of us adjoining homeowners whose property values and quality of life will be significantly impacted. Our house backs to the field in question. So we will be seeing the solar field from the back of our house as opposed to the people that are seeing it from the front. That field is surrounded on three sides by homes. We are concerned about our wells that sit near the fields as well, as not enough research has been done to determine the impact that they will have on our drinking water or the long-term impact they will have on the fertility of the farmland for future use and for future generations. The EPA website notes that many types of solar panels have chemicals in them that cause them to be classified as toxic waste. Would you want them near the well that provides your family with drinking water? Our well is in the backyard of our property. Building industrial solar farms near homes and wells is a fairly new concept and the long-term effects of them on humans are just not yet known. We do not want to be the guinea pigs. To be clear, we are not against solar in general, but the proposed projects are indeed industrial solar farms and they do not belong in the middle of our rural residential neighborhood or on fertile actively farmed fields. They should be placed in industrial or commercially zoned areas. Um, the solar companies don't want to put them on rooftops, in parking lots, et cetera, because it's more expensive. They're doing the absolute cheapest way possible at the expense of everyone who lives around the field. Please do the right thing for us, for the farmers, for our children. Keep these projects off the fertile actively farmed land that sits smack in the middle of our neighborhoods, very close to our homes. And there's one more thing I just want to add is the concern about what is going to happen to the solar farms once they have done their job and are no longer good. I know from sitting through enough hearings that the original solar farm, solar company sells them off. Who's going to ensure that they are properly disposed of? And if this happens throughout our country, county, and throughout our state, we're going to have hundreds of acres of fields of solar panels that we're not going to know what to do with. And somehow the disposal of old solar panels that no longer work does not really sound like green energy to me in the end. Thank you so much for your time and I hope that you consider our concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Give me just one moment, please. Okay, thank you, Ms. Roberts. I appreciate your time. I also should say that there are several written pub, public comments that I've been receiving in this matter already. And those includes some by Ms. Fleischel, who already spoke, Ms. Roberts, who just spoke, and Gary Weishar, who's going to speak in a few minutes. I think. So those, I just wanted to say that those comments have been received and are being considered. So thank you. Next is Stephen Roberts.
Hi, Honorable Judge Grace. Just to clarify what Lauren didn't mention in the, in her overview of the solar farm per hour, their outreach to the community back in January twenty-twenty-three. First off, this is this is proposed on thirty-five acre parcel of the hundred-and-twenty-five acres. It's separated by by trees. So it's approximately thirty-five acres that this solar panel group is going on, even though it is a hundred-and-twenty-five acre parcel that surrounds our community. During that outreach, they also highlighted that the landscaping barriers, the trees that they were going to plant, they showed us a picture of what it's going to look like in fifteen years of a twenty-year project because they can't put in mature enough trees. It's not cost-effective. So we're supposed to suffer for fifteen years of the twenty-year project. They also mentioned that Taberton does not own this. They install it and they sell it off to somebody else. So in that case, you would think they're looking at the cheapest option to get it installed.
Okay, so good evening, Honorable Judge Grace. My name is Stephen Roberts and we live at sixty-five-seventy-one Justana Court, Sandy's husband. Following twenty years overseas, twenty years of overseas tours in Yemen, Iraq, Afghanistan, and Pakistan, in twenty-ten, we selectively chose our Carroll County home with a focus on the clean, tranquil, and natural beauty that embodies this lovely county. I hope you have had the privilege to travel down Fannie Dorsey Road to view the beautiful homes adjacent to the proposed solar farm for case ninety-seven thirty-five. Our home value and quality of life will negatively be impacted if approved. During the height of the COVID in twenty-twenty, previous county commissioners adopted Amendment one fifty-eight dot one fifty-three E permitting solar on ag land in Carroll County. This amendment was driven by solar companies and ag land owners, not farmers, looking at profit margins while the average citizen was focused on adjusting to a COVID-impacted virtual environment. I have viewed the original commissioners' meetings whereby the solar companies sold and influenced our commissioners to adopt the amendment, all while the, all while the average citizen was watching the COVID numbers at home. Once these proposed projects were publicized, impacted residents all across Carroll County engaged with our newly-elected commissioners, sharing their concerns. Following months of testimony, research, and a commissioner-driven working group, our elected officials unanimously voted to abolish the amendment. Why? Because of numerous unanswered questions on acres of hazardous solar panels co-located to, co-located to our drinking wells, the eventual decommissioning of these green solar panels into our county landfills, impacts to our local wildlife, and primarily the vast majority of Carroll County citizens who want to preserve the natural beauty of this county and sustain our core industry of agriculture for which these properties are strictly zoned for and termed as ag land, not solar land. We are not opposed to large-scale solar projects as industrial solar has a home within industrial and commercial setting for which there are ample unexplored opportunities across this county and state. As my wife mentioned, the nine-megawatt solar project in Hampstead, Maryland, at the time largest solar project in Maryland, was approved, constructed without community opposition. I always have to question as to why our government buildings are not covered in solar, but our elected officials who work in those buildings feel a need to force unwanted solar projects in our back and front yards, but ignore the opportunities around them. Judge Grace, me and my family calmly request for you to ask yourself, would you be concerned with an agricultural zone property co-located, co-located next to your house, property being converted into industrial solar, completely surrounded by chain-link fencing? Most homeowners associations would not permit and within two-hundred feet of your front door? A large sixteen-point-five acre prison-like structure with immature landscaping being erected on the unnatural farmland you specifically bought next to and not permitted by the local law? That is what this solar project is proposing. As a judge, please uphold the local law and honor and respect our elected officials' decisions as they are citizens with our communities and they relish the same qualities of life that most Carroll County residents have chosen to live here for. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Thank you, Mr. Roberts, for your time. Craig Hall? Give me just a moment. I'm trying to see if there's a Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall, appears, there's some, ah, there you are.
Hi, thank you, Your Honor, for the opportunity to speak. I'm not going to belabor everyone else's points. I just wanted to go on record to say that I am totally opposed to the solar projects on Fannie Dorsey Road. I currently reside at sixty-five-seventy Justana Court. And I am, I would say several hundred feet from the the solar project and half a mile from the other. the solar project and half a mile from the other one. Um, and obviously every day I would have to look at this eyesore. Um, and I absolutely echo the previous speaker's, uh, concerns and frustrations. And I guess what's important for us to think about is how, uh, the solar projects and the farmland preservation, the will of the people, and sovereignty of our county intersect with this project. And, um, uh, again, I just wanted to go on record and, uh, thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Uh, Gary Weishar?
Uh, this is Annette Fleischel. Um, unfortunately, Gary had an another commitment tonight that he needed to honor. He sent me an email asking me to read his presentation, but I never picked it up until later this evening. So if he sent it to you, I trust that you can put it into testimony for him. Um, if not, I'll be sure that it gets to you. So there was just an unfortunate incident.
Thank you, Ms. Fleischel. Um, Mr. Weishar has already filed written comment. Um, so he knows how to file that. So he, he can file additional written comment if he would like.
All right. I'll just tell him that for sure.
Thank you.
I have already said, I was sorry I didn't pick up this message.
Okay, um, Ms. Fleischel, I have you on. Are you ready to, um, read Mr. Hamilton's statement?
Right, I'd be happy to. Um, Mark Hamilton lives next door, um, to Dennis Minor on Fannie Dorsey Road at, um, I think he has his address in here. Um, he has a pulmonary condition that does not allow him to be able to speak for long periods of time. I know he is listening to this, to this, uh, hearing, so, um, hi, Mark. Um, so this is from Mark Hamilton. The citizens, oh, I just lost the zoom. What happened?
You're, you're still here.
Oh, okay. I saw the picture. Um, the citizens, commissioners, planning and zoning management, and zoning board of Carroll County are united in our attempts to stop the aggressive attempts of the big solar energy generating companies and the misguided landowners to construct solar or farms on their valuable agricultural land. During the past two years, through many commissioners' meetings, general public meetings, and town hall meetings, and with the support of the county planning and land management and zoning board, it was unanimously approved by all of these county departments involved to ban solar from being placed and built on valuable agricultural land. Then, on July 13th, 2023, the Carroll County Commissioners, along with the Planning and Zoning Board, enacted Ordinance Number 2023-04, which clearly states, um, the Public Code of Public Laws and Ordinances of Carroll County, Land Use Chapter 158, Zoning Regulations 158.153, quote, "Community solar energy generating systems in agriculture zones is hereby repealed and deleted in its entirety." First of all, our whole residential community is opposed to the solar energy generating facility being placed adjacent to our existing nearby residential zone properties, which are closely bordered along three sides of it and directly facing my property located at 981 Fannie Dorsey Road. Per Chaberton Site Dry Playa, the nearest solar panels are designated to be only 252 feet from the existing face of my house and front door, and 226 feet and 265 feet likewise from the fronts of two other neighbors' homes who are on either side of me, who in their right mind would plan and approve for something like this to be squeezed into a tightly nestled residential community this close to our 41-year-old existing homes. These solar facilities are considered industrial or commercial in nature and should only be allowed to be built within such approved zones. Secondly, the PSC needs to follow Carroll County's site solar design specifications concerning the close proximity placement of these solar energy generating facilities, surrounded by residential properties within a residential community, and also obey the planned setback distances and any amendments concerning close proximity placement to nearby residential property lines and existing dwellings. If the ordinance ruling is to be overturned by the state, Maryland Senate Bill 613, House Bill 908, may allow community solar in, quote, "certain circumstances," affects effective January 1st, 2023. But this does not mean that it is always feasible and in everyone's best interest to allow them in every circumstance. Carroll County Zoning Ordinance 2023-04 was enacted by its citizens and government to preserve the beauty of Carroll County's rolling countryside and farmland by prohibiting solar on agricultural land. And the state of Maryland, using the public's county's, uh, county, wait a minute, using the Public Service Commission, should not have the authority or right to supersede Carroll County's approved code by challenging and ignoring our local ordinances and zoning requirements, which were sensibly approved and set in place by our honorable elected officials and department heads. That was his testimony. Thank you, Judge Grace. What happened? No, something cut me off.
No, you're not cut off. It was me. I had muted.
My husband.
Oh, okay.
I got you back.
Thank you, Ms. Fleischel. Um, all right. Chris Hine, I understand, well, I have on my list from my staff, um, that you signed up to speak, but I also understand that you're the Carroll County Planning Director. So did you want to speak tonight?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. So, good evening. My name is Chris Hine, and I'm the Director of Planning and Land Management for Carroll County. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening. This year, Carroll County is celebrating the 60th anniversary of the adoption of our master plan. For 60 years, the county has followed the fundamental concept that our agricultural industry is a priority and that our rural landscape must be preserved. Our zoning codes have been effective in focusing growth to our municipalities and limiting commercial and industrial development to those areas where we as a community have determined this type of development is appropriate. Carroll County was implementing smart growth for decades before the state of Maryland made it a priority. The authority to preserve our agricultural industry for the benefit of all of our citizens is explicitly permitted by the Maryland Annotated Code, which states, states in Section 4-101 of the Land Use Article, and I'll quote, "It is the policy of the state that the orderly development and use of land structures requires comprehensive regulation through the implementation of planning and zoning controls, and planning and zoning controls shall be implemented by local government," end quote. So we have not just been exercising our regulatory authority. Carroll County has invested over $250 million over the past 40 years to preserve agricultural land. Our program is the most successful in the state and one of the top five most successful programs in the country, having preserved over 80,000 acres to date with a goal to preserve over 100,000 acres. This is a program that was awarded the 2021 Maryland Sustainable Growth Award for Preservation and Conservation from the Maryland Department of Planning. In addition, our program directly supports the goals of the 2023 Maryland the Beautiful Act, passed by the Maryland General Assembly, which is striving to conserve 30% of the state by 2030 and conserve 40% of the state by 2040. So solar facilities are an industrial use of land. That's not a negative, it is just a fact. The county supports the development of solar energy, and we have developed several solar projects on county-owned property. One of the largest roof-mounted solar installations in the nation is in our county, covering over a million square feet. We allow solar as an accessory use in all our zoning districts. Although prohibited on agriculturally zoned land, solar generating facilities are allowable in our commercial, industrial, and employment campus zoning districts. We embrace the idea of solar energy development just in areas where it is appropriate. The industrial development of solar facilities on sensitive agricultural and conservation land is not appropriate for the fabric of our community and is therefore prohibited by county zoning codes. One of the primary benefits of zoning regulations is predictability. Property owners know what they can do with their land. The community knows what can be done with land that is in their neighborhood. Now, zoning regulations can be changed, but they are changed by elected officials through a public process where the community voice can be heard. Carroll County knows what is best for Carroll County, and this is why the State Land Use Article gives planning and zoning authority to us. So as you know, the, under the Public Utilities Article, the PSC is required to give due consideration to local land use interests when considering these cases. So I respectfully ask that you consider the 60 years of planning that have led to the scenic oasis that is our county that our citizens, elected officials, and the state legislature wish to preserve. This location on Fannie Dorsey Road is not appropriate. It is agricultural land, and industrial development will be a significant impact to the community, as you've heard tonight. We welcome conversations with solar development firms to utilize our commercial industrial zones. However, their profits in pursuing greenfield development on our agricultural land should not be viewed as more important than the quality of life of our citizens. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hine. Um, I have kind of a firm rule that I don't let anyone ask, uh, people who are giving public comment any questions. But I wondered if I might break my rule and ask, uh, the Land Use Article that you cited, I, I missed it when I was taking notes. Was that 4101?
Uh, yes, uh, 4-101 of the Land Use Article.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Now, I realize that the Carroll County Commissioners are presiding with me over this hearing, but I wanted to open the floor to each of you to see if there were any other comments that you wanted to make. Uh, we can start with Commissioner Kyler.
Yes, um, excuse me. Thank you. Um, just a couple of comments. One, I really appreciate the citizens getting on here and speaking their mind. And Judge, I appreciate the opportunity you're giving us, and I look forward to the, uh, local meeting coming up. And we're looking to, to find, uh, close sites to the, to this. Um, as Chris Hine briefly said, of, of the eight-plus community solar projects that have been proposed so far in Carroll County, these two are probably in the worst locations. Um, most of the landowners involved in all eight are not farmers, they're developers. And, and again, we, we, we have great pride in our agricultural industry and, and zoning. Um, if any of these do happen, which seems to always be a probability, um, I, I asked the developers and the, uh, the ones building the solar systems, don't, don't do the minimum. Do, do reasonable setbacks, reasonable screening. I've heard, uh, um, certain trees can't be bought. Well, they can. They might cost a little bit more, but if somebody's getting three and a half million dollars over 20 years for this, you can probably buy a hundred thousand dollars worth of trees. And it needs proper access, and I know, uh, the applicant did say they will buy by oilstorm or to management and sediment control, so I just encourage them to do that. And again, uh, um, we value our farmland in Carroll County, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kyler. Commissioner Garen?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Thank you very much for allowing me the, the privilege to, to speak again. Um, I do have a couple of quick points, but I'll be brief. I do want to mention the fact that I know the term "community" is used often in these types of projects. Uh, there, in actuality, though, let's be honest with each other, there is nothing "community" about this particular project. In fact, no one can even tell me if any of this energy would go to the quote-unquote "community." There's already a community there. It's been there for about 40, 50 years along Fannie Dorsey Road. That's the quote-unquote "community." So, uh, that's a word that's thrown around a lot in today's lingo, but there's nothing "community" about this particular project. I also wanted to clarify that during the presentation, it was mentioned that the north or northeast portion of the project is buffered with trees. That is correct, but there's no houses up there. Nobody actually lives up there. The houses are surrounding the, essentially the east, south, and the west side of the project. That's not exact, but that's, that's close. Um, I'll conclude. Uh, I, I understand. I'm not naive. None of the commissioners are. Uh, we understand that our opposition to this project and some other ones in the county, it's a relative uphill, uphill battle. But if I may, Your Honor, I implore you, I would extend this request to Mr. Miller as well. I implore your, ploy you, I beg you, please put yourself in the position, these good people on Fannie Dorsey Road. Please do that in making this decision. Not this project, not this location, not these folks. There are better locations for projects within the county. This is absolutely the worst one, and I know that's not a tangible request that gets into human nature and human emotion, but I, I really hope that it is allowed to be a part of the decision-making process for this particular case. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the call this evening that wants to speak that hasn't been given an opportunity? If you're speaking, you're muted, but I'll give it another couple of seconds. Okay, I, I wanted to state again that, um, written public comments are, um, can be filed through, Mr. Thompson, I'm going ahead and mute you. Uh, you became unmuted. Oh. Written public comments can be filed in this matter on the Maryland Public Service Commission website through Monday, January 13th, 2025. And there will be a second evening public comment hearing in person, um, which will be announced soon. I thank everyone from the bottom of my heart for, um, showing up this morning and taking the time. I know that, that you have other things that, that you would probably like to be doing, but we really do appreciate, um, feedback from the community and from the county. So I appreciate everyone being here this evening. Um, Mr. Court reporter, we can go off the record, and thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you all.